Used to, but we will.
Okay, so anyway, I've called the meeting to order and I'm gonna call the roll. And so we have Commissioner Snodgrass.
Here.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Soltis.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Mr. Bukar.
Here.
Okay, so we are all here and we are represented by staff with Michelle and with Robin and Jeremy tonight. And we're gonna be doing an economic development, but first I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes on the agenda since we were not able to do this in the last meeting.
I move we approve the minutes as written, both sets.
A second. You have a motion and a second. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Now we move to public comment. I see we have someone in the audience. You wish to comment? It's been, okay. Okay, we, we hope we can. Actually, they're, they're, they're the people you wanna ask questions of. They're the real knowledgeable ones. You wouldn't happen to be our new member, would you?
No.
Okay. All right, so now we'll move on then to the comprehensive plan update, element seven, economic development presentation. And Jeremy, I think this is your bailiwick.
Yes, thank you Commissioners. Oh, sorry. Thank you Commissioners and good evening. We're here to discuss the economic development chapter. Chapter seven of the comprehensive plan. So I've provided a brief overview that I'll go over now before we dive into questions and discussion of the elements. Economic development there. So as we previously discussed, as Robin has discussed in prior meetings, there's somewhat of a lack of cohesion between the individual chapters of the comp plan. This chapter is one that is lacking a vision statement. So up on the screen here, I've included the statement that we had on the city website in the comprehensive plan update section. Just as a brief overview for, we're providing that to the public. And as we move along, maybe we could come over the vision statement if that's what Commission wishes to do. And make a note that Commissioner Jordan has logged down.
Jeremy, could you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so as y'all know, a comprehensive plan is mandated by the Growth Management Act. I guess we don't need to go through this since sure everybody is aware of that. Countywide planning policies are included within the comp plan, actually within the section. As mandated by the Growth Management Act to provide for consistency amongst the cities. Skip through this. It's all listed in the existing section. So the existing element has two goals. One is develop a sound fiscal base. The policies include job creation, site identification, site efficiencies, site priorities, and capture revenues. The second goal is increase local opportunities and policies include small business development, property revitalization, financial programs, future development opportunities, home-based occupations and businesses. So this unfortunately it's not super visible from in the room here. I've included this graph and two others in those packets that you each have. Now have one available if our visitor here would like it. Printed out some extras. All right, so this graph is occupation demographics of residents within the city. And it's from the American Community Survey. And as we've seen in the housing needs assessment and with other discussions, while the city presently has roughly 11,000 jobs, Gig Harbor residents are not necessarily the ones who are working those jobs. So there's sort of a disconnect. So those working in the city don't necessarily live here and those that live here don't necessarily work here. And we can speak to this a bit later as well. Something I like to point out is that the number of workers on the list at first glance, it seems rather low. With roughly 4,900 workers aged 16 plus out of the 12,000 and change population that we've noted before. I'll go to this one. Should be the third page that you have. So those top two for the year 2021 on the right side are 65 plus and under 19. So the under 19 one actually makes up 27% roughly of the population. So it's a pretty big, pretty big chunk that could potentially not be included amongst those workers. So that's kind of gives you a good idea of how that number at 4,900 could come up. So now let's open things up for discussion and as we discuss the chapter, I'd like for Commissioners to consider these four questions. What is working? So what in the element do you think has been a success so far? What is not working? Obviously something that would need to change. What could be added to better fit the needs of today and 2024? And what are some potential challenges as we move forward? Thank you.
Jeremy, are you looking for questions or comments?
Just comments, discussion.
Okay.
However, you'd like to proceed.
Commissioner Snodgrass, would you like to start out?
Thank you. I would. I have a few questions. One of the things I've noticed reading the plan is it looks like the last numbers in that plan are from 2012. So have are there, are these basically our updated numbers?
Those are from 2021. So we have some even newer numbers from the housing needs assessment. Robin can speak more to if necessary.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the, the demographic data obviously needs to be revised throughout the, the comp plan for, for housing, for economic development. A number of different elements will need to be reflected in population and, and the trends that we're, that we're seeing because that really bears on jobs and housing, among other things.
Thank you. Would you like to spread questions out? I have several questions, so.
Does anybody have anything you wanna break up right now or should I just? Okay.
Okay. Have the city staff been able to identify the declining commercial areas? Is this on a neighborhood basis or is it on a parcel basis?
That's, that's a good question. Declining in terms of
It was stated in the, in the element to identify areas of declining commercial activity or something. And I was
We, we have not yet. We, and, and a couple of Commissioners have asked about providing tax revenue data, sales tax revenue. So we can get a look at which areas, I think some of it's intuitive, of course, which parts of the city provide the, the bulk of, of sales tax revenue. But looking at trends is not something we've delved into yet, but we certainly will.
Okay. And on site ID, site identification, what has been done 2012 to 2020 and then also post pandemic for the like public agencies, private interests, getting those involved in figuring out how to identify sites that have, but I guess you just said we haven't done much yet.
I, you know, to me, this element, I mean, when, when you look at the, you know, what's working, what's not working. I am not aware of, of any concerted efforts that have been made, at least in the past few years. I can't speak to, you know, going back to, to 2012. My understanding is that a lot of the work of economic development has been farmed out, if you will. We talked to downtown waterfront alliance and the chamber about things like parking and, but you know, those are sort of pieces of, of, of a bigger picture, really. And so in terms of specifically identifying opportunity sites, sites that are underperforming, we have not done a, a study.
Seven one four, the ranking system hasn't happened.
Has not happened as far as I am aware. No, absolutely.
And that sort of leads into what you just said, especially turnover downtown is insane. And I was talking to one of the store owners who just recently sold her business and it was kind of a matter of rents, business conditions and someone who was kind of experienced in the area that had available capital that could take it over for her and she was, she is shutting down, turning things over rather quickly. But we were talking about that and I talked to the amazing people that run the trolley now that used to run the marketplace girl.
Yep.
And it was a matter of rent increases and, and all of those over there and so I am like downtown being our highest concentration of local small businesses. I mean, I am curious, since you just mentioned the waterfront alliance and, and the chamber, what is being done to help, you know, encourage small business down there, help our small businesses that are down there? So that that does stay viable.
I, I think as, as you said, you know, identifying, I mean, obviously there are things that we can control and things that we can't. We need to make sure that whether it's permit, permit streamlining for folks that wanna come in and, you know, have to go through some hurdles, maybe unnecessarily. We have been talking pretty extensively over the past couple of months about change of use permits and how we process those. So if, if a retail business wants to come in and occupy a space that was previously occupied by a retail business, that should be like a slam dunk. That should be over the counter, boom, here's your permit unless they're making, you know, structural changes or whatever, which is rare. It should be a tenant improvement over the counter permit. And so we, we have been talking a lot about that with, with public works, with the, the building folks to, to see how we can get there. And everybody agrees that, that we could do some work on that. So changing some of that will involve changing our development regulations. Some of it will be more internal policy. But I think to the extent that we can get out of the way with permitting, that's something that comes up a lot. People will talk about how difficult it is to get a permit. Of course, you know, every case, every site has, has a separate story attached to that and not every site is, is the same. But we have been focusing on parking because that comes up periodically as, as a problem. If we're requiring a certain number of off-street parking spaces and you can't accommodate that, do we just say, sorry, you, you can't operate here or you can't have enough seats to make your business viable? No, we, we don't want, we don't want that. So that's where we're working with downtown waterfront alliance to, to figure out a parking strategy, shared parking. I mean, there's, you know, reducing the, the requirement altogether. But it's interesting because you will have people saying, you know, I can't find a space. We've talked about in here. Yeah, when there's an event going on, parking's kinda tough. Farmers market, you know, you have to go down a few blocks. But generally, even on a weekend, even on a beautiful summer day, there is parking. It's, it's, you know, not in front of the store you wanna go to necessarily or the restaurant you wanna go to. But, but that's, that's an issue that we can address. And through, again, policy changes and maybe development regulation changes, market forces and rents. You know, there, there's, we don't have, we don't have tools in the toolbox for that. But we were, we've, we've talked about having an economic development position, not a staff position, because I don't think, as we were discussing a little bit earlier, I don't know that we have enough work to, to support a full-time position. But maybe partnerships with other jurisdictions, you know, grant opportunities. But having, having folks that are dedicated to making contact with property owners, making contact with, with businesses. I mean, that does happen in other jurisdictions. That doesn't mean that, that we have control over, you know, who ends up signing a lease or whatever, but, but we do have those meetings. So to the extent that we can incorporate, you know, these sorts of things into, into policies, we're, we're ready to do that. But, but it is important to solicit feedback, like you're talking about, from the business owners to say, what are the issues? Are the issues that we don't have the bodies? Are the issues, you know, again, rents? You know, the old economic sort of supply and demand. I'm, I'm thinking, you know, it, it, it doesn't serve a landlord to have kind of a revolving door of tenants that, that can't afford to, to pay rent because they just, their business doesn't support that. So is there something else going on there? We definitely need to be digging in and having these conversations like you just referenced to find out what exactly is the issue? Is it that people are shopping on Amazon? We've talked about that here, right? That, that retail is, has morphed into something else. Is it that we don't have complementary businesses that can draw in? We don't have anchors per se. It's not like a shopping center downtown where you have, you know, specific anchors that are driving and then, oh, by the way, I'll hit all these other shops. But there are certainly, you know, who knows? Maybe some, some design elements that, that create that sense of place that we've talked about. All of these are things that as we continue to do outreach events, we can focus on, you know, an open house or, or some sort of event where we look just at economic development and we're talking to business owners and the chamber and downtown waterfront and saying, okay, these are the things we've heard, you know, tell us what's real, what's not and, and what we can do to support you. That's what this, that's what this whole process is about, right?
I am a big believer in going directly to the business owners and not depending on just one entity to, to act as a middleman, but getting all of those entities talking together. I am curious about something that you talked about. The parking requirements. Do you keep a record of that so that we could see how many times that has actually been an issue in, in the, in the permitting process?
Not a discreet record. I mean, it, it's, you know, every permit application is a public record. It, it would be it, it's not a, it's not a bad data point to try to, to try to call. I only know anecdotally of
I'd be curious if, if parking requirements are actually an issue.
Right. Is it perceived or is it actual? There, we know of at least, and, and I think Jeremy knows probably more, more than I do as he's, he's processed a couple of applications where parking was an issue. And, and it, it limited now whether again, you know, we can only sort of guess to a certain extent whether it's, what's a, a real or perceived issue. But when somebody says, I need to have 20 seats to make this a viable business. However, whatever the metrics are that, that arrive at that. And we say, well, if you have 20 seats, you need X number of parking spaces that they don't have. Is that driving them away? Is that, you know, limiting them so that it really just doesn't pencil out for them? It's hard to say and it really is, you know, specific to the business. There are businesses that just don't have a market, right? I mean, that, that's a real thing. Back a thousand years ago, I had, I was an independent bookstore owner slash newsstand. And, you know, I don't, that, that, you don't see those anymore, right? So you have to be cognizant of, of who your audience is and, you know, some businesses, I can't remember the statistic is, but it's something like, you know, every new business within the first three years, you know, like 80% go out of business or something, right? It's very, very high. It is hard to, it's hard to be a small business owner and unless it's a hobby and you have a trust fund or something, it's, it's really challenging. So determining what we can do to, to help with that is, is a challenge. We're, you know, we're throwing up ideas and seeing, but parking has been raised enough times that I think it does warrant us looking at those requirements again and seeing if they just are too strict.
I had one last question, but it can actually be more of a comment because I think you sort of addressed it with some of your earlier answers. Seven two two talked about identifying properties that need and can be redeveloped and, and revitalized, but based on your earlier answers that we haven't gotten those, these items just haven't been done. So we wanna talk about what's working. Well, nothing much on this element was actually accomplished. So I think it would be good as far as this element goes to get the, some of the tax revenue data that Commissioner Brown had discussed and to start looking at areas of declining commercial activity and what, identifying the properties that could be redeveloped or privatized. And then we can identify agencies or private interests that can work on redeveloping those. And in that process, when we look at, at underutilized properties or areas of declining, we can be looking at the parking requirements as well. Although I think we can all agree downtown is most likely where the parking requirements are impacting. Permitting?
Okay. Agreed.
I would, I guess piggyback on the change of use comment. I've heard that from several sources that the I, onerous nature and I, of the change of use really adds to the cost and the ability for small businesses to repurpose, I guess storefronts or what have you downtown. And I think that is, I mean, I just heard it from several sources. That seems to be, you know, quashing some vitality that we might otherwise see. And another comment, now I've lost it. I'll take a break on that one.
I'd like to step back a little bit, Jeremy. You talked about consistency in the elements across the comp plan and there really isn't strong case made so far for that, at least not in the plan we're looking at. Think that we ought to think about applying that across the board and maybe the way to do it is it's the GMA, it's the countywide planning policies, and then those two major components lead into whatever we're talking about, like economic development. They each say something about that. I sort of see that in this document. But it's awkwardly written. It's, it's hard. I think I know I'm supposed to be reading, but I'm not really reading those words. So either I'm a slow learner, which could be, but I think that, that standardization template would really work, work well. And maybe starting with this because I gotta tell you, my concern here is that almost nothing in this comp plan has been accomplished in the city since it was written. Unless there's a lot of stuff out there that I don't know about. Because Allison hit a couple of points just in a few minutes, but I don't think there's any concerted effort in the city to look at this and say, how are we going to implement that? And if we don't have that in our comp plan, that mentality, then why do we even have it in the comp plan? It's a waste of time. So I would suggest that we somehow try to summarize which of these elements, which of these points has been addressed by the city or someplace in the city or somewhere in the state or, or the county. What's been done? Get a little summary, not an elaborate one, Jeremy, but, you know, what should these, go one by one, what have we done in the last X amount of years to, to address this? And if, if the answer is zero, then that's a good data point. We go from there. But I don't think we can, we shouldn't do this again if we're not willing to go and put the effort in. And you can't just tell somebody else on staff to go do this kind of job. This is a, this is an important piece of work and it can't be other duties assigned, in my opinion. That's my generic comment. Standardize format and then maybe becomes a lot easier to basically go both of each element. If we are, we got the front ends done. We know what the goals are, the policies, and then we run into our own particular goals and policies for this comp plan. That's my thought, at least on that one. Couple of specifics for you. How do retirees count in this whole template of employment? I mean, not employment, but of, um, employment needs. They're usually over 65 and they're part of the community, but they may not be working. Is that, are they somehow filtered out of this thing, out of the whole process?
Yeah. So if they're not actively employed, they would not be counted as part of those roughly 4,900 workers. So they'd be in the other, about 6,000. So that, those numbers are just currently employed, Gig Harbor residents.
When it says in the temp, in table two, Jeremy, employment capacity talks about employees per acre. I love that one.
Yeah, that's, that's a fun one.
There's a column that says, and everything is 19.37. And I guess I don't really quite understand the concept. Could you help me understand that a little bit better? Definitely, this is a key component for, that would be for the next comp plan. It, it seems like it would be. It's like a, the standard template. We ought to at least be able to explain every category in there to somebody's satisfaction.
Yeah, I don't know if that's necessarily a useful statistic to have in the, anywhere.
All right. And let's see. I agree with the change of use thing that Mark and Allison had brought up. That sounds like a really simple, straightforward fix. Why, why wouldn't we do that? And I'll, I'll shift on to, I'll pass the baton to anybody else for the moment.
Hold on.
Actually, I should probably turn my mic, mic on. Commissioner Jordan, do you have any thoughts? Okay, I'll take that as a no. I had a number of thoughts that both of you helped be generate here as, as you were speaking. First of all, there's kind of an oddball anchor in waterfront downtown area and that's the post office. Everybody goes to the post office. So how do we get them to stay around and shop when they go to the post office? And, you know, thinking about parking, we've got that great big parking lot at the post office, which is totally underutilized. Is there some way we could develop cooperative agreements with the owner of that property to use some of that parking for businesses so they wouldn't have to provide additional parking?
The code allows for shared parking in the downtown district, but it is the responsibility of the property owner to make that parking available for shared parking. So if they don't agree to it, we really can't force them to do that.
Somebody had made the comment earlier, probably Robin, about it, the parking may not be available in front of the business that you want. I frequently park at, at the post office parking lot and, you know, walk from there because I know it's available parking and I don't love parallel parking. But I think that is possibly a deterrent for some people and it's a matter of, I don't know, maybe educating or signage or something that we could kind of encourage people that that parking is there and that it is easily walkable. Just, I, I don't know for sure that that is people's deterrent. But it's my, it's, it's my expectation. It's my thought that they just don't want to walk that far.
We could encourage them to get more exercise by walking between the businesses. I had a few other things too here. Uh, Jeremy, you have, what are some potential challenges as we move forward? Work from home is something that, uh, was not at all really in existence when the original language here was written. I just read an interesting article that the city of Tulsa, Oklahoma is offering people who work in technology type businesses, even if they work from home, ten thousand dollars to relocate to Oklahoma. I don't know if that's anything that, you know, we could come anywhere close to here, but I thought that was a really interesting comment, uh, offering an economic incentive. And the city did some research and they felt that they gained a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in economic benefit to the city for each ten thousand dollars that they invested. So there's an interesting concept there. I think a really big issue that is a challenge to us in the future is artificial intelligence. And, uh, I don't, you know, I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure I know what it is, but it's obviously, everybody seems to think it's going to have an enormous impact on employment in the future. And I'm not sure how we address it in a comprehensive plan, but I think we ought to at least make some sort of mention of it. That this is something that's coming down the road that's going to, uh, impact it, impact us.
Are you thinking of a policy that specifically addresses, um, you know, that advances in technology?
That's probably the way to go.
Yeah.
Advances in technology, and that would also, uh, probably cover the online shopping issue, which has been something that has just exploded in the last few years. Moving on to some other areas, um, office space. It seems to me that we have plenty of underutilized office space in North Gig Harbor. And, uh, I live right behind a little office building there that has never been fully occupied in the twelve years that I've lived there. The hospital has never, they have a office building there that has never been full. And so how do we get people to locate, uh, into some of those buildings that are not being adequately utilized?
Good comment.
So that's another thing to consider. Lastly, I read, uh, Tom Brown's, uh, excellent memo here. And I think he makes some very good points, and that probably should be included in the record of our meeting here tonight.
We will do that.
That's all I had. Commissioner Salters.
Did Tom send out something to all of us or is it something that went to the staff?
It was an email. I don't know if you all got it or not, maybe you didn't, but, uh, I received it and I made a copy of it. Here, it's a three-page thing and even drew some nice, uh, graphics on it. So, okay, well, I'll pass it down here, you can take a quick look at it.
Did you guys get it?
I can, I can forward that.
Pardon? Okay. Well, I think, uh, he did raise the issue, I think the same that Commissioner Salters raised, that, um, we haven't really done a whole lot in this area. He makes the point that we have some, uh, types of occupations that we have a lot of activity in. And he mentioned specifically in the medical, uh, in the, uh, aging and, uh, of course, retail development as well, and senior care, well, that's what I meant by aging there, but that's, he provides a better description. And, uh, he suggests as part of the economic development element, to start out with a description of Gig Harbor as it is today. And he lists about ten different points here that kind of describe some of the conditions in the city that we have. In that we've got a beautiful setting, we've got historic buildings, twelve thousand people live here. But we do have expensive housing. That's kind of a, uh, downside to attracting, uh, uh, people to come here and work. Let's see, only go on. He makes some comparisons to Poles Bowl as being a similar community and talks a little bit about what they've, uh, developed in terms of their economic development, noting that they have a lot of small and medium-sized locally owned businesses. He also, uh, has a nice little diagram here. And as I said, I'll pass this around, you can take a look at it real quickly. And, uh, also talks a little bit about the tax revenue and, uh, our relationship to, uh, the area around us. And I believe, and Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot more people that live on the, on this part of the Kitsap Peninsula that live outside of Gig Harbor than in Gig Harbor.
True.
And I think that's something that also should be addressed in our economic development plan. And, uh,
Entrance.
Noting how we're kind of a magnet for commercial activity here. Because there really isn't much in the way of commercial activity outside of Gig Harbor until you, uh, get up to, uh, Fort Orchard. Really isn't anything much of significance in the key peninsula. And so we're serving a lot more people here than live in the city.
True.
So anyway, that's, uh, that's what he has to say. So let me pass this over to you, just take a quick look, scan it and then
Thank you.
The other ones, I should have made more copies. I didn't realize you folks didn't see that.
I would like to comment to Commissioner Brown's comment about Poles Bow and something Robin said earlier about placemaking. It is worth noting that Poles Bow is in large part what Poles Bow is because of one man. Because of a man who painted the signs and created the image, the streetscape of Poles Bow. So there is comprehensive, uh, cohesive placemaking. He had a vision and a, a skill. And he put those two things to use to create that cohesion and that sense of place that exists within Poles Bow, which, once you get it in a couple of places and people like, oh, that's so cute. It, it brings more people in, more businesses are interested, and then that pulls in more people and, and more businesses are attracted to that. So there is something to be considered there about how can we use that same concept, that sense of placemaking to create that cohesion in our downtown area, the way Poles Bow did.
If I can interject quickly, the, the idea has been floated and I'm not sure, um, that the commissioners have, um, have heard this, but, um, an idea has, has, uh, come around that maybe it would be beneficial to limit businesses in the downtown to retail and restaurants. And, and to, and I, don't ask me how this would actually play out, but, um, but to, to limit, um, uh, offices and, or even prohibit, um, uh, certain types of office space, um, to make it more vibrant. Is that an idea that has any traction with commissioners? I'm just curious.
Are they determining that things like realtors and insurance agents are offices or are they retail?
Offices.
Because I, it is my personal opinion, um, that I like to think is somewhat based in some education and experience, but it is just my personal opinion that you want that variety to help generate foot traffic. And when you have people working down there, they're more likely to walk to pick up something on their one shower or to walk to go pick up something to eat. I think the idea of creating a vibrant community involves mixed use. Even if it's not the mixed use that everyone talks about now where it's retail, office ground floor and residential above, having that mix of uses within a one block area creates some of that vibrancy.
I would, I would agree with that. What was the term we were speaking of zoning about the, was it form over function as far as?
Form-based zoning.
Yeah, I think that I would go, prefer to go that direction than, uh, trying to prescribe the actual uses, which kind of takes us back to the change of use thing. I mean, broadening those definitions, I think, would be more important for the vitality in it. And I've regained earlier thoughts, uh, about that also. And if we could maybe go, move towards more of a generalized zoning, uh, for some of our commercial, um, entities, so there was the more freedom of use for the, for the, for the spaces. The other thought I had was about its economic development. How would we, I don't know if it could be in partnership with the greater, um, county economic development push, but could we identify what strengths we actually have? Whether it's, uh, our position as a transportation hub or, um, uh, if we have good water quality or, or power rates. I mean, there's, there's got to be some advantages we have in this community that would be, that a potential businesses would, would, uh, find useful to locate here. And I, and I don't know what, what path would be the right one to, uh, explore that more.
I would expect the quality of our schools and the general education level of our populace would be big selling points for business. But I do think it's interesting that there has been a, and I don't think it's a bad thing necessarily, um, activity on the industrial front, both industrial development and Tacoma Screw relocating over here. And those are not necessarily, um, college education kind of jobs, but they are good jobs. And, and I think highlighting that activity would also be good.
So that was another note I had too, was, uh, as far as education, um, and then career education, whether it's job, um, you know, more blue collar career education, whether those could be collate, collate, co-located with some type of, um, business incubators or things like that. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of ways to kind of spin up the vitality of the open area through some of the zoning we have already, maybe refine.
Back to your, oops, sorry. Oh, uh, going back to your prior point, I think you were looking for somewhat of, uh, promotion of the uh, strengths of the city or somebody, somebody or something to do that. Is that correct?
Uh, I guess the first step though would be identifying those strengths.
Okay.
And whether that's just talking to what the businesses we have here now or others that are potentially locating here and say, well, yeah, you're, you're, we're somewhat of a gateway to the Olympic Peninsula here, so that would be advantageous, I would think, to some, some businesses and, and, you know, what, what other strengths do we have? I think identifying those, we could then help form our policy and our plan to promote those. What's that? Well, I don't think you can ignore those. No, absolutely.
I think our biggest strength to attracting people and businesses to Gig Harbor is the environment. You've got a fantastic environment here. That's one of the reasons, major reasons I'm here rather than back down in Oregon. But I think that's certainly a selling point for getting businesses to locate here. Open your business and dock your boat.
I think that, uh, Mark had two great ideas and I want to double up on them. That one about the strengths is great, and I don't see why that couldn't be a paragraph in the comprehensive plan. Uh, it's, it's just leads into why, what our underlying, underpinning of our, our economic development plan is. We have all these strengths, X, Y, and Z. And, you know, we should capture our weaknesses for sure, but we don't really want to put them in the plan probably. The other thing was on the, I really liked the idea about the, um, we talked about the blue collar jobs and training programs and things like that. I mean, if you can bring in training programs for plumbers and electricians and that, there's an area you could incentivize somehow. The city could incentivize a training center or something that would bring people in that would train for these jobs, relocate when they're done in our city and have great incomes to live here. So, uh, that's, that kind of idea, I think is something we ought to percolate more on, what things can build economic growth. And, and there's all kinds of good ideas out there, but we just get on a couple right away. Good job, Commissioner.
And we work with the community college to bring some of those job training programs.
That's what came to mind as you were talking about that TCC. Well, Peninsula School District actually has a program where kids who do not necessarily want the college track can bus, be bused to, is it to Peninsula High School? Cause I think, I thought they were bused to like, um, you know, Bates, uh, TCC, you know, some other things that they've, well, Running Start is, is a separate thing, but yeah, um, is it, do they go to Peninsula? Okay.
Where you learn like all of the trades and get certifications like BOSHA and all these things. But then they have where you can go to Bates, the South Sound Tech or Olympia Community College in Bremerton.
That's what I think we should make sure that we know and understand, and that is promoted in this as well. I really do like the idea of, of this section being started with what we have going for us and what we would like to be focusing on and then where we would like to go.
Love it. I love the education piece. Yeah, and, yep, awesome.
Question, Latitude Forty-seven, that big business complex, is that located in the city or is that in the county?
It is in the city, and I was almost going to bring it up as, you know, we, we've been talking a lot about downtown and, and issues downtown, but, um, there's some really exciting businesses that, uh, have located there. And, and I think, um, I think we need to, um, to pay attention to that and, uh, and nurture that. Do you have you processing permits out at Latitude? Okay, yeah, um, I mean, it's, it's, there's, you know, light manufacturing, but, but there's some, some really kind of state of the art setups out there. And I'll, I'll get more information and, and pass it along, cause I haven't been looking at those permits recently. But it's, it's almost full. So we're not having trouble, uh, at least that location is not having trouble, uh, getting folks to come in and start a, start a business.
That would be a really fun thing to see and to like really, like, introduce us to those businesses and, and those businesses to this process.
Yeah, I drove around there yesterday just to have a look and see what was there, cause I knew we were going to be doing this tonight. And, uh, yeah, there's a real variety there. There's still space for some more businesses to locate there. So I think that would be something we definitely want to get the word out on.
Yep, agreed.
I just want to offer kind of a general comment. I, I've been listening a lot. In my opinion is that economic development in Gig Harbor has been very robust. There are areas such as small business downtown where that's not them so. Uh, this is a very desirable community. Yes, we can reduce some of the costs of startup here through permitting and such. But plenty of businesses, as you've all pointed out, are coming here because it is a desirable community. Uh, we have a whole lot of people here that are highly educated and highly technical that are desirable for those kinds of businesses to come here. What we really miss then, from what I'm hearing, is things like small businesses that want to locate downtown. And then how can we bring something else into the downtown area? And, and that, that's a different set of issues. It's, it comes down to a question, uh, not do we need economic development? But what kind of economic development are we seeking? Paying off of that, Larry, you know, the kind of economic development we're seeking, I would say is some of those people that head off to Tacoma and Seattle for high-paid, high-tech jobs, that they can't find in Gig Harbor. If they, if we could relocate some of those, uh, startups, some of those places that have a lot of potential for young people or with high, uh, technical skills, then we could bring some of them back home to Gig Harbor, if you will. But I think there's opportunity there.
And I would add, even on the basis of this report, a lot of that is happening right now. It's just happening as they work from home. I do, I, I have two businesses that I operate from home. I don't even operate.
I don't even operate in the state of Washington. But I pay my taxes here. I pay my business fees here. And I, you know, I'm, I'm one of hundreds.
Well, how does that track with the demographic data, Jeremy? If you're working from home, are you still? If your business is worldwide and you're working out of your office in North Gig Harbor?
It is unclear in the data, so I don't really want to assume how they counted it. It didn't account for where the, the headquarters is for their, their office or where maybe the physical offices or whether or not they counted working from home as part of that.
I, I don't know exactly how we would go about getting the data, but it's sort of related to that. It would be really interesting to know how many people in the harbor are running businesses essentially out of their home.
We have, we can get data for home occupation permits and business licenses.
They wouldn't necessarily be home occupation permits.
As it has been noted already, this, this is one of those fundamental changes that affects all cities. Working from home and in, in the commodities areas, purchasing online as opposed from a local brick and mortar store. Everybody's going to have to deal with that. That is a very thorny issue.
Right. So folks who, you know, drive for Uber or, you know, one of the services that pick up food and, and deliver it. It's not clear to me how, how that's accounted for either in the data, but that would be something that I think that we, you know, we can, we can dive in and, and see, like you said, everybody is wrestling with the same thing. But, but it seems like we can't ignore it as, as we're looking at these, changing our policies, please.
Oh, I was just gonna, it actually piggybacks on what you were, on some things that were said about downtown and then what you said about changes in retail, basically. And what they have found or shown, certainly what they believe right now is that retail trends, those brick and mortars that can create an experiential retail experience for people draw people in. And to me, with that, our stuff like Girls Night Out, though the Sip and Strolls, those things, they're not exactly one retailer that sets up a very specific experience for their shoppers, but it creates an experience for shoppers across a greater number of businesses. And getting the waterfront alliance and the chamber and the actual businesses downtown involved or people who have tried to get businesses and reaching out on how we can create that. More of those experiential opportunities for people will help drive those business to those small businesses downtown to help, because Costco and Home Depot are not going to lose business because of what they are. Our grocery stores are not going to lose business for what they are. So the other two retail nodes have anchors. They have drivers. It's what we do to protect downtown and downtown being our highest concentration of local small businesses. It's how do we, how do we help them? How do we encourage them to stay in business and how do we encourage more of them? And experiential shopping is one of those things.
Do you see a role for the city in that? Right now, most of those activities are sponsored by, again, Downtown Waterfront or Chamber. Uptown has their own events that are run by, I think, I don't know, there's a nonprofit, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But is there a role for the city to, to promote, to partner, to get more of those going or, you know, year round?
Yeah. Partner, I think is probably the best word that you use there. But if we want to help encourage it and if the city is in charge of permitting and if the city's in charge of parking and city's in charge of those things, why would we not have a seat at the table? And why, if the city benefits from retail revenues, why would they not have a vested interest? Why would the city not be a stakeholder in that?
You know, I was looking through some of these details here and increased local economic opportunities. There are some words that kind of talk about the things that we just talked about. We, the problem is there's no action that follows the words, which I think is what we really need. I mean, I love the idea of supporting the local small businesses and Allison is exactly right. We don't have to, it doesn't have to be a big financial take. It's just basically you get involved and you add, you throw some leadership in there maybe or some time and attendance, some kind of help to the process. And I think that's one of the, one of the roles the city can do. It can steward some of these things without making a big fiscal contribution. And it could help the process. I, I wanted to throw one other idea here and don't laugh at me, but in, in the climate action plan, they talk about vehicle miles traveled is one of the key metrics that they want to reduce if they can. And I think I would reduce my vehicle miles traveled if they put a Chick-fil-A in Gig Harbor. Now, that is a metaphor for what is it Gig Harbor doesn't have that we need, but we have to go across the bridge for? I mean, is there a way that we can solicit those kinds of businesses to come into town? I don't know, whatever it might be, some kind of thing that you normally go across the bridge to get your service. Do we have everything here? If we don't, maybe there's a way we could have a, a squad that goes out there and convinces somebody to come and move to Gig Harbor for, you know, selfish purposes or any business. Good thing. And, and I think we somehow would reduce our vehicle miles traveled and it'd be like a win-win.
Do they still publish the big retail book? Do we know?
I don't know that.
Um, because I, when you left, that is, that is a really common thing. You hear people gripe a lot that there isn't a Chick-fil-A over here and all of that. But Trader Joe's is another one you hear people gripe about. Trader Joe's Chick-fil-A, they have very, very strict requirements, parameters for, or criteria, whatever word you want to use for what they need to go into a market. So if we can get access, if they still publish the retail book, that would be a really good tool in helping us identify, you know, what do we like, what do we have a chance of getting based on our demographics and all that, because that would play a role in that.
Well, this is why I think going back to Robin's comment about partnering with other jurisdictions and getting some economic development staff support through that particular vehicle, I think is really important because that's what we need to get things going, to start taking some action. So we need to have people on the ground working on this. We can say everything that we can about what we should do, but unless it gets done, nothing's going to happen.
Should the element be looking at the, the different parts of the city differently? So we've talked again, we've talked a lot about downtown. We know Gig Harbor North has, you know, the big boxes. As far as I know, they're, they're doing fine. Uptown seems to be pretty vibrant, although I've heard some grumblings here and there that, and I think we've talked about it here, that, you know, you go into Met Market or Harbor Greens, there don't seem to be a ton of people in there, but they're, they're hanging in. So are we looking at, at these as, as, you know, different focus points that have different needs? And is that, is that helpful or is that divisive? Is that, I mean, I, I know what I think, but I'm curious about your.
Yeah. Well, you, you, you look at these different areas. So you've got the downtown for small business. You've got, as you mentioned, the big box in North Gig Harbor. And then you've got all our groceries pretty much are uptown as well as that's a banking center and there's a lot of medical offices there. So you've got these different concentrations of businesses in different parts of the city. And yes, you do have to look at them differently.
Well, I think, yeah, from a given climate standpoint, ensuring that we have a mix of of services in each geographic area, I think would be important. And I, and I don't know how we coordinate that with the county too, as far as how, how they could allow growth in some of their commercial nodes that are outside the city that would help prevent those residents from having to crisscross the greater area for their essential services. I think would be important also.
Sorry, residual.
I do think we have to look at them as separate entities that do have these separate focuses. Okay. But to, I feel like I have definitely perceived an us versus them attitude among people. And I would love to see us define these neighborhoods, these nodes in the, in the comprehensive plan in such a way that it creates cohesion, that there's space for everybody because they have these different specialties, these different concentrations.
Right. That's what, I think that's what I was getting at when we talked about design, certainly it, it was very similar, right? So Gig Harbor is known for downtown, but it's not just downtown. And, and I, I guess my, my concern is how we address the differences without, you know, creating, like you just said, us versus them, they get the attention or they, because obviously big box sales revenue, I haven't looked at it, I'm going to guess significantly higher than, than downtown and, and same with uptown. So what does that mean? That they're, you know, right? How do we, how do we look at that and, and assess what that means? It's always going to be that way. So it, it, it tells us something, but I'm not sure what we necessarily want to do with that. Just looking at that sales tax revenue. I've, I've been pondering that a little bit.
And I wondered that too, but it does give us, it gives us a data point.
Yeah.
I mean, y'all will get tired of hearing me talk about data is just data until you have context. And contest, context makes data information. And then we can move forward from that. If we can show, you know, if, if people in uptown are like, why is downtown all that? Or if downtown's feeling, we can, gives us kind of a basis, like gives us numbers to kind of back up whatever or guides us. We thought this was going to be the case. We see it a little bit differently now and, and shape accordingly. I don't think it's necessarily the end all be all. I think there's, there is a lot of context to put to the data to make it informative.
Agreed. Thank you.
Jeremy, are you kind of keeping track of these four categories as we kind of weave around our, our conversation tonight? Are you going to be able to like generate a little, this is what we think the commission said? Because we've got a lot of points we've been throwing out there, but hope somebody's capturing.
Yeah, Robin's doing a fantastic job of taking notes here.
I'm taking everything down and, and will, I, I owe you from, from previous sessions. I know it's, 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 it's been a, a bit of a, a busy couple of weeks, but, but I have all of your comments and we'll put it into, I, I think these boxes are, are helpful. Just to sort of, you know, although not a lot in that first box, what is working? Maybe some of the ideas, you know, are, are good, but I think, I think we've heard loud and clear and, and we agree frankly, that the policies have not been acted on and, and we don't really have much to show for it. At least how the policies are framed. That doesn't mean that we haven't been doing things, that we don't have areas where, where we're doing well and have been successful in, you know, promoting business. But it's not reflected in, in the policies and, and we need to do some work.
So the county policies and the GMA, this basically gives us the goal, goal seven point one, develop sound fiscal base and the second one as well. And we basically fill in what we think gets us to that goal. Is that the way the process is supposed to work?
That's correct.
So we have a lot of flexibility to get the, the details to match Gig Harbor and match what we actually can deliver on. And maybe we ought to keep that in mind, what's practical for the level of support that we're going to have for economic development. And if it's less support than we expect, then we ought to have a very modest set of things, not, not throw everything out there that could be done, throw out the things that we think we could actually achieve.
Jeremy and Robin, would you be able to put something together then from the comments that we've made this evening?
Yes.
Are we winding down here? Do we have other things? Commissioner Jordan has been silent. Mr. Jordan, do you want to add anything to the discussion? Maybe he's having technical difficulties. Okay. Well, anything else, Commissioner Salters?
After we read Commissioner Brown's comments, it might be, it might jog some comments. Could we send those to you and Jeremy?
Yes. Yeah. Please feel free to email us any comments you have regarding these, the elements we're discussing today or what we have discussed moving forward.
Okay. There's nothing else then. We'll move on to other business. Next meeting, Thursday, July 6th, 2023. I will be here. By six.
I'll be here.
I'll be on the road then.
What is the topic?
We're, we're mulling that over, but we will note that Commissioner Jordan has.
Oh, yes. Okay. Commissioner Jordan.
Hi. Yeah. Really good conversation. I didn't hear Michelle's question.
Uh, the question was regarding the next commission meeting on July 6th. We're looking to see who would be in attendance potentially if that meeting is to happen.
It follows the holiday real close, so that was the.
Yeah. Yeah. I think I can be available. I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So it sounds like at least we'll have a quorum for that. So we'll miss you, but. Okay. Great.
And we will be joined by our new commissioner. And I will, I will let everybody know where we're at, part of, part of the, the discussion and, and how we roll out the, the different elements is some of this has to do with some of the, the feedback that we're getting from, from folks and, and what seems kind of more germane because we've, we've heard back. So I'm, I'm still pondering if anybody has any, any particular interest that they want to, to deal with next. I'm, I'm, I'm all ears, but otherwise I will, I will let you know early next week.
Okay. And, oh, go ahead. Yes.
I may. I think we've talked about this before. What, what's our best vehicle if we wanted to share some background among the group? And I, I know we have to maintain a public forum, but is there a way to, that we could post it somewhere?
I think the best way. I think the best way to do that is to work through staff.
Yeah.
And it's to.
Yes, please.
Robin.
Right.
And then she'll disperse it among us.
Okay. Much like, yeah. So like this, um.
Like Commissioner Brown's.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
It, there's certainly appropriate to, to discuss.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, it's just too difficult to work within the open meetings law and, uh,
Yeah, if we try to do that. Send things back directly. Yeah. Okay.
I did want to take a moment to, uh, recognize, uh, Commissioner Brown, who will be leaving us. And he will be missed. He's been a great asset to this group, a faithful attendee. And, uh, you know, if any of you see him around, please, uh, say hi to him and tell him we really appreciated him and thank him for all that he did for us.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else to come before the body? Okay. With that then, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I would move for adjournment.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you, uh, staff, as per your usual.